Welcome to the Williamson County School Board Election Forum. My name is Derby Jones and I'm publisher of the Williamson Herald Newspaper. Tonight's forum will feature school board candidates from districts three and five. And before we meet the candidates, I'd like to take a minute to introduce our sponsors and our forum team who worked really hard to put on this virtual forum tonight. First of all, Kell McDowell with Williamson, Inc. He is Director of Government Affairs. And also from Williamson, Inc. is Anna Lisa Roberts, and she's the Economic Development Manager. From Williamson County Association of Realtors, also our sponsor tonight, as you can see behind me, Mr. Jordan Vaughn is President, Williamson County Association of Realtors, and he's been on our team, as well as Sarah Selman, who is the Operations Manager at WCAR. We'll also have Tori Kiefer, who is a staff reporter for the Williamson Herald, who covers Williamson County Commission and School Board, will be with us tonight, was on our team. And also, I'll be introducing here in a second, Mr. Tom Lawrence of WAKM AM 950. He is the voice of Williamson County, and WAKM is also a sponsor tonight. I want to give a big shout out to WCTV and Creed Henderson and his team who are filming this tonight, and you can also watch it live on WCTV's YouTube channel, and also go there later if you are not able to see it tonight. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Tom Lawrence to get the ball rolling on the election forum. And, Tom, welcome.
Only one thing to warn you about. We will be done by seven o'clock, because Kell says it will be so. There's something else I need to warn you candidates about, and that means you too, Elliot. We have a mute button. And in the year 2020, we're going to use a mute button. So if you go much over the time limitations, then Kell and the Association of Realtor folks will push the mute button. Let's head to opening statements. First opening statement, it's a video from Fifth District's Brian Snyder.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Brian Snyder, and I'm running for the Fifth District seat in the Williamson County School Board. I want to start off by saying thank you so much to Williamson, Inc., Kell McDowell, Matt Lawrence, and your entire team. You guys do a fantastic job, so thank you for putting this together. I know you had some help with the Williamson Herald. Thank you guys for being a part of that. The Williamson County Association of Realtors, I've had a long-term relationship with them. Your continued interest in local politics and county politics, and especially your interest in the school board, continues to show your recognition that the Williamson County Schools is an economic driver of the entire county. It drives home sales, it drives businesses and corporations being here, and ultimately tax dollars. So thank you guys for being here. And finally, to WAKM, Tom Lawrence, you are certainly the voice of Williamson County. I've enjoyed our conversations over the years, so thank you for being a part of this. I want to take a moment to say I am so sorry and I apologize that I cannot be there live in person tonight. Tonight is a very significant milestone birthday for my wife. We've had quite a few things planned for this evening, and then some travel as well. So although I'm not here, I recognize that puts me a little bit of a disadvantage in regards to asking questions, but I want you to know I'm open and I'm receptive. In the time of COVID-19, we've had to be creative in our campaigning, and how we meet, where we meet, and who we can meet with, but I am highly accessible online. You can find out more information about me on our Facebook page. When you just search Brian Snyder School Board, you'll find that. Happy to answer questions, happy to have phone calls. If you're comfortable with a meeting, and we can do that in a socially distant and appropriate way, happy to do that as well. Look forward to meeting with you, look forward to talking to you. Again, my apologies for not being here tonight. Congratulations to our other candidates, not only in our district, but the other candidates who are running as well. Thank you, and I'll be back soon to make our closing statement.
The Fifth District's Jennifer Apria.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Apria, and I am excited to be here. I really do appreciate everyone who brought us together. This is a great opportunity. As Brian mentioned, it is a very interesting time to be campaigning. I have never campaigned for anything before, so it makes it doubly interesting. I'm a former elementary school teacher. I've taught in public schools for 12 years. I have kids at Trinity, a second and a fourth grader. So, public schooling has always been very near and dear to my heart. I've been very involved in their education journey since before our school started, basically preparing. And as you can probably see, if you've been on my Facebook page, I am a big communicator. And as I've been preparing for what we're going to choose, because I still, even though the deadline is tomorrow, don't really know what option I'm going to choose for my kids back to school on August 7th. I've been talking with families and asking their opinions of where they stand, and we've been talking about the various options and working it through. And so that's just always been the way I've been, is trying to plan what's best for my family, and also talk to others about what they feel is best for their families, and work together so that everyone can have the best educational experience possible. I don't currently teach right now. I'm working for the ARC of Tennessee, which is a nonprofit that advocates for families with children with intellectual and developmental disabilities, like my son. So that is also very near and dear to my heart. And the position I hold is Director of Family Engagement and Special Education. So I work with families across the state of Tennessee through the Tennessee Department of Education to increase the quality and quantity of family engagement in that journey. As a special ed parent myself, I can relate. And also, as a former teacher who had children with IDPs in my classroom, I can kind of see both sides. So thank you for joining us tonight. I can't wait to answer your questions.
The Fifth District's Dr. Margie Johnson.
Good afternoon. Oh, shoot. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for hosting this forum. It's a pleasure to be here and see everybody, because we've all been isolated, even though we're on Zoom, it's great to see everyone. So I am Dr. Margie Johnson. I have a doctorate degree in Educational Leadership, Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Phoenix. I have worked in education for 24 years. I like to tell people I started, yes, at the age of six, right? Because I'm only 30, right? Yes. But had lots of diverse experiences. I taught middle school for seven years in Kentucky, North Carolina, and Tennessee. And then in 2003, I have been working in various capacities for the central office at Metro Nashville Public Schools, including Instructional Technology Director. I've also been in charge of professional development, and now I am in charge of data use. Metro Schools, we have a data warehouse, and my role is to build the capacity of educators, and actually all stakeholders, because we just launched an open data portal for our community, to use data for supporting student success. Personally, I have three amazing sons. I have two sophomores at Nolansville High School, and a fifth grader at Mill Creek Elementary. And just a little bit about my sophomores, they're actually not twins. I don't know if you've Googled me or, you know, looked at my Facebook page, but all my children are from adoption. I have two from Ethiopia and one from Korea. And my Korean son was the first one home, but now he's the middle child. And then my oldest son was the second one home. He was six when he came home. And then my youngest was eight months. And so we're an eclectic family, and I'm looking forward to answering all your questions. Thank you.
The Third District's Jennifer Moss.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me, and thank you, everyone, for making this really possible. I've lived in Williamson County for only three years. We moved here mostly for the school districts. We were living in Spring Hill, Southern Spring Hill, I call it, in Maury County, for three years, and then we moved up here. I've been married for nine years. My husband and I have three wonderful children whom we've adopted through the foster care system here in Tennessee. Our children are 12, 14, and 17, and attend Heritage Middle School and Independent High. Currently, my job is a medical coding auditor and educator. I teach the doctors medical documentation and coding, so they can bill your insurance properly. I also have three higher-level certificates in my field. My other experience has been that of Medical Coding Program Director at Fortis Institute in Nashville. And there, I managed a team of over 20 faculty, scheduled them, scheduled the classes, taught in the classroom. And I also teach quilting at Joann's in Franklin, so that's my fun teaching also right now. And I decided to run the school board because I just love education. I love working. I think our career training can expand, and I just love working on education. I think it's our great socioeconomic equalizer. Regardless of how much money that you have, education can overcome anything. Thank you very much.
The Third District's Elliot Mitchell.
Thank you, Tom. I also want to thank Williamson County Realtors and WAKM and Williamson, Inc. for putting this together and inviting us all tonight. This is an important event, and elections, school board elections, so often don't get the attention that they need. As we said, my name's Elliot Mitchell. I'm the incumbent, I guess, in District Three. I've lived in Spring Hill for about 25 years. I'm a native Tennessean. I was born in Chattanooga, graduated from MTSU with a degree in Computer Science. My daytime job is I'm an executive with a corporation out of Canada called OpenText. I run an IT group there. I am a longtime volunteer in the county and in my community. I have a passion for community service, and I have done everything from being on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce to running baseball programs here in Spring Hill. I'm running for reelection because I want to make sure that the district and the schools have stable leadership and a consistent leadership through these, through the trying times that the pandemic is bringing to our lives. I have three children, all who went to Williamson County Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and my wife is an employee with the district as well. Thank you.
Question number one will be delivered by Tori Kiefer, and each candidate will have one minute to respond.
Hi, I'm Tori Kiefer. I'm a reporter with the Williamson Herald, and my question for you all today is, how do you intend to foster parent collaboration during your time as a school board member?
Jennifer Moss is the first respondent.
Okay, well, I want to clarify. Do you mean parent collaboration with other parents or parents with the teachers? You said foster parent collaboration. Do you mean parent to parent or parent to teacher? I just want to make sure I understand the question.
Elliot Mitchell.
You can't hear her.
I was unmuted. I'm sorry.
Tom, did you hear Jennifer asked? She wanted some clarification on the question. I can go ahead if you'd like.
Sorry, we couldn't actually hear you. I'm going to turn this up, and then I'll have you repeat your question.
Okay. All right, can you hear me? Yes?
All right, now we can hear you.
Oh, you can.
Sorry, Jennifer, I'm good at reading lips, not that good. So would you repeat your answer, please?
All right. My question is, I didn't understand it. You had said foster parent collaboration. Are we talking parent to parent or parent to teacher? Which collaboration are we talking about?
I think it's probably both, parent with the system and parent to parent.
Well, I think parent to system, of course, I have dogs, parent to system. I know that the school is excellent at sending out a lot of emails, and I know I read them, I get them, I get them every single week, if not twice a week. So I definitely suggest, of course, parents read those emails. It's tedious sometimes, I understand, but we do have to read those emails to work with the school board and with the school themselves to know what's going on. And I would really want to talk to, well, parents and maybe match up parents together who can work together and help each other out, because these are really difficult times with our kids, you know, going to school, and we're all feeling very separated. There are ways to just bring us back together. Thank you.
Elliot Mitchell.
Thank you. So as everybody who has a child in Williamson County Schools knows, In Focus is the district's primary newsletter that comes out once a week, and so that is the main communication out of, from the district and from the leadership of the district to the parents. I personally will continue to run a Williamson County Schools Facebook page, personal Facebook page, where people can reach out to me as well. And my email address is, for the district, is on the website, and I answer emails that are from my constituents directly to me. I also continue to attend meetings and school functions where we have opportunity to commute, that are for the purpose of communicating to the parents. So those will be the activities that I would do.
Jennifer Apria, 60 seconds.
Collaboration is one of the things I actually do through my job at the ARC. Getting families engaged is often a hard thing to do. A lot of people are busy, we have things going on, but communication is key, clear communication coming from the top down. As a school board member, I would make sure to continue running this Facebook page that I've set up. Social media is important nowadays, and we have to meet parents where they are. So if we can get them and get them engaged with the conversation, I put on community conversations through my work, where we get families and stakeholders from the community together to talk about issues that they're noticing in their schools and their community. We specifically talk about special education, but it can be about anything, and that kind of conversation is important to have with families to keep them engaged.
Dr. Margie Johnson, District Five.
Well, I'm so glad you asked this question, as, you know, one of, part of my platform is about fostering collaboration, and I have done a lot of work in the area of collaboration. I've been trained on how to effectively lead teams. And even with this campaign, you know, in addition to the great communication Williamson County Schools already does, I've been doing a Margie Monday Morning Report. That would also address state and the national level, what's going on in education, because I think one way to foster collaboration is by empowering people with information, so trying to get them to see kind of the full scope of the educational landscape. And then, if elected, I want to create kind of collaboration hubs, where I will ask for volunteers to kind of be like pinpoint for their subdivisions, and create like a networking structure in that way so that we can talk. Now, of course, you can always reach me, but wanting to be strategic in how we collaborate and communicate with each other. Thank you.
Second question will come from Kell McDowell, Williamson, Inc. This is somewhat of a curveball. This is the only question that you only have 30 seconds to deliver your response in. Kell?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kell McDowell, Williamson, Inc. Seats on the WCS Board of Education are nonpartisan. Has your campaign received donations from partisan organizations or political action committees?
Dr. Margie Johnson, first up.
If you check the website, my campaign financials are posted. I have no donations over $100. They've all come from individuals. And right now, my campaign sits at like $742, and I'm going to make up the difference. So no, I have not received any donations from a political action committee or special interest group.
Jennifer Apria.
Same information. My financials are all up on the website. I've raised over $4,000, all from individuals. If you see the one big donation, that's my mom. She donated $1,000 to my campaign this quarter, so that was kind of exciting. She rooted for me. But everything comes from individuals, no partisan organizations or PAC.
Elliot Mitchell.
So everything I have spent has come out of my own pocket. I've been self-funded for this particular campaign, and I have not received any donations from any political action committees. I have been endorsed by the Williamson County Business PAC.
Jennifer Moss.
I am also self-funded. I have not had any donations from anyone, no political action groups, no one. I'm self-funded.
Question number three is a video question from Maggie Jones.
Hi, I'm Maggie Jones, a junior at Brentwood High School. With the reopening framework released last week, what do you believe are the most important considerations going forward as we start a new school year?
One minute for each candidate to answer, beginning with Elliot Mitchell.
Thank you. It's a great question. So the most important considerations, given the opening plan that we approved on Monday night, I think is the safety of the adults, as well as the safety of the children in the building. So that's really the key feature. I think that if we have to go into the remote learning approach that we've, due to the virus, the spread of the virus, then the secondary support mechanisms that the schools provide for some of the children in the district, like lunches and breakfast, I think that becomes a key piece, and then being able to continue to do the daycare that we do after school care for children whose parents work. So I think safety of our children and staff is paramount at this point.
Jennifer Moss, Third District.
Yes, of course, safety is important. As they said in the meeting the other night, social distancing with children is near impossible. We can only do what we can do. We teach the children to wear the masks, help them to do that, help them to wash their hands all the time, safety with our kids, safety with our staff members, our teachers, everyone involved in that. We have a lot of people in a school building in a day, and it's a challenge, absolutely a challenge. I think that working with it, playing games with the masks with the kids, I even thought about, let's get some of that fabric that you can color on, and they can make some of their own masks, and maybe that would help them keep it better, things like that to do to just make it fun, make it part of the culture, make it interesting, something that is not ominous for the kids is really the best thing to do to keep everyone safe. And as we, if we go into that remote learning situation, we'll go there, and then we'll go back to the building, the school building, when we can. And so just keeping everyone safe and navigating the best we can, since these are completely unprecedented times. Thank you.
From the Fifth District, Dr. Margie Johnson.
So the considerations, there are two that I want to talk about. First, you know, I think about the considerations anytime you're working in a school, and that's Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. And it talks about, you know, the physical needs have to be met first, and then the psychological, for psychological safety before learning can occur. So it's, you know, all teachers get trained in this, and as long as we create caring, welcoming, opening environment, you know, our children are going to be able to learn. I am thankful that Williamson County did offer two options, the traditional, I call it flash remote, and the online, so that, you know, for some reason, if families can't attend, they have the online option. I'd also, if you are looking for, let's say, homeschooling, one of my concerns is about funding from the state funding, and I'm asking people to reach out to Nate Morrow, our state representative, to try to keep our funding at the same level in case we have a decrease in enrollment this year.
Jennifer Apria.
So primarily, obviously, health and safety first and foremost, but since that's been covered, I'm going to talk about some other things that I think we should start thinking about, since we're looking at going forward now that the plan has been released. First of all, staffing and logistics. I think we need to be worrying about whether or not some teachers are going to decide to retire sooner rather than they would have. We need to look at, as the requests for online learning are coming in, if we're going to have to pull more online teachers from classrooms that weren't necessarily choosing online because of health conditions that were volunteering for online, what the staffing is going to look like for that. We should be talking about the, you know, the trigger with the metric now is not a clear, if we hit 0.5%, we're going to medium spread. Now it's triggering a conversation. So I would love to have some clear communication about what those conversations are going to look like, when parents will be informed about when those conversations are completed, so that we can get a better idea of what we can expect if we are going to switch to remote. And then also looking at reentry for January, if parents choose the online option, what's that going to look like if they switch mid-year and decide to go back into the classroom, because things are looking better with the COVID rates. So just things to be thinking about as we're moving forward.
Question number four. Candidates, you have 60 seconds each, beginning with Jennifer Apria. The question comes from Jordan Vaughn.
Good evening. I'm Jordan Vaughn, with President of the Williamson County Association of Realtors. Candidates, what should be the district's priorities as it pertains to the students' mental health?
Well, in this current environment, I would say that the very first thing will be figuring out where they are when they come back to school. There's a lot we haven't been witness to, and I know as a public school teacher, we're on the front lines of really noticing if things are going on with kids. We, as teachers in the classroom, spend almost more waking hours a lot of times with the children than the parents do, and so if there's something going on, we might be privy to picking up on that. So since we've been out home since March, there's going to be a long gap where teachers are going to have to kind of really check in at the beginning of school and see how their kids are doing. So providing them with, you know, just a kind of a in-person evaluation, see the status of everyone, how we've been doing on all this isolation, because obviously, being alone like this without our friends, it can, it can take a toll. It's taken a toll on the adults that we know. So I'm running out of time, but I would say just, you know, taking into consideration what everyone has been through as a community as we go into going back to school.
Dr. Margie Johnson.
So mental health is, you know, very important. Again, it kind of goes back to my last answer about Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, and also having children from adoption who have face trauma. I know how important it is. Again, you've got to help them feel safe. We, honestly, I think the first two or three weeks of school needs to be about processing what we've been through. I know I work for Metro Nashville Public Schools, and that, they're going to spend several, I think the first couple of weeks, actually just helping people process. Now, learning can still occur, but, you know, think about as adults, if we're emotionally spent, it's really hard to learn. And so we really have to make sure that we have some mental health strategy in place to start the school year.
Jennifer Moss.
Yes, well, I think the kids, definitely we need the school counselors to be there, which they are going to be there. The teachers are absolutely the first point of contact for the kids to know if something is wrong. They know these kids, they remember them, they've seen them in other grades around the school, so they know a lot of these kids. I have learned with my kids from whom I've adopted also, they need to be safe. They had had a lot of trauma also. I have found that with the kids, routine is extremely helpful in making them feel safe. So actually, the sooner they get back into the routine of school, I think a lot of their anxiety is going to go away. My kids have expressed to me that not being in school is very difficult for them. So I would say absolutely, get them in school, get to a routine, back that it's familiar to them, that gives them that sense of security, and create peer groups so they can talk to each other. They will open up to each other much more than they will to anyone else. Thank you.
Elliot Mitchell.
So thank you for that question. So, thank you for that, for that question, Jordan. The school district's five-year plan talks about, strategic plan talks about educating and taking care of the, of the total child or the whole child. And so, that kind of goes to the, it isn't so much just about the curriculum, but it also goes about, goes towards the mental health and, and personal happiness of, of our children that are in our care. So, I think obviously, one of our challenges with Williamson County being a high-performing district is our children, especially at the high school level, but even at the elementary and middle school are, have a lot of pressure to perform, whether that's from their parents or peers or, or where, or just our local society. So, there's a lot of anxiety and we need to make sure that we address it. We also need to make sure that our counselors are, are available to our children that are doing the online school and also during the remote, remote training.
Question number five is a video question from Anzley Vaughn.
Hi, my name is Anzley Vaughn and I'm an incoming seventh grader at Page Middle. With the disruptions of COVID-19, do you foresee fundamental changes in schooling on the horizon? What could this mean in terms of physical versus digital infrastructure investment?
Jennifer Moss, please answer first.
Well, I don't really see fundamental changes. We are still going to be teaching all of the requirements, the educational requirements. I, whether it's in the classroom or if it's the remote learning because we had to leave the schools, the core of our education, all of our, our points are still going to be met. We're still going to fulfill all of our educational requirements that we need and the teachers are learning how to present what was set for the classroom on a digital platform. So, I do not think, I think there will be a couple of glitches here and there, but overall, I do not see fundamentally us changing our education. Thank you.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yeah, that's a, there's a lot to answer in 60 seconds on that question. So, first off, the, this pandemic is a societal disruptor and it is forcing every business and every government agency in the entire country, I dare say, Western civilization to change their working model and their business models and schools are no different. So, for, for us to think that this isn't going to change if it continues on and we're not back to our historic norms, to think that this isn't going to change how we fund schools and what we're spending our money on, I think is, is somewhat naive. So, to that point, I think we're absolutely already started to change how we're funding on our digital side. We, we accelerated our, our ability to provide Chromebooks to every student. Over the summer, we purchased 17,000 additional Chromebooks. We, we reduced the retirement of another 15,000 to ensure that every child had, had access to a digital tablet and we bought a supply of, of internet devices for the families that don't have internet access. So, yeah, absolutely, it's going to change how we, how we teach, assuming the pandemic stays with us.
Jennifer Apria.
So, one of the things that's actually a very positive part of having a lot of this go online, I've been speaking with families involved in special education is that this has given their parents a lot of, a better opportunity to attend their IUP meetings because now they can do them remotely. So, I think looking at that as a positive and seeing if we can even continue doing that after we are back in classrooms, but obviously, being in the classroom is what's best for students, what's best for teachers. I do have, I've had this suggestion actually with Jason Golden on a call we had a couple months ago about, when I was teaching, we had a countywide curriculum pacing guide and I thought that would be so smart to have for our district because we basically had a few teachers on special assignment, get together and create this for the entire district so that any fourth grade teacher, for example, at any school site would be teaching the same content from the same, we all use the same textbooks countywide, so they would just be teaching the same things on the same day. And then if you have a weather delay or, you know, stay home for snow or COVID-19 and you suddenly have to go remote, everyone is on the same page. It helps if kids are moving schools, it helps a whole lot of areas and gets everyone on the same page. So, I think that would be something to look at as far as infrastructure for our, our content for our teachers in teaching.
Dr. Margie Johnson.
So, fundamentally, schools were created to serve the communities in which they reside. In, in terms of that changing, I don't think that's going to change. That's the purpose of schools. In terms of physical versus digital, I mean, I've been, I've been teaching online since 2003, so online learning and remote learning is nothing new. I think now it's kind of right, become a big, oh, we got to shift to it investment because unfortunately, technology changes so rapidly, it's really hard to make an investment. As soon as teachers start to learn that, then, you know, there's a new device. So, what I want to see is us really focusing on, now that we have these devices, building teachers' capacity to engage students in innovative learning experiences because we all learn differently. And that's just going to be another tool, I call it kind of a teacher toolbox that teachers will have.
A question number six, you will have one minute to answer. Dr. Margie Johnson will be the first to answer and Jordan Vaughn has the question.
Candidates, what rezoning factors would or do you consider as a board member?
The rezoning factor is we need to start working with town planning because like, I live in Nolansville and I can think of probably 10 subdivisions, it seems like, if it's not that many, going up within a mile or two-mile radius. So, we've got to start thinking about the town planning, what's being sold to, to, you know, for growth. We also need community voice. I know there's a, some constituents of District Five in Brentwood that they actually want to be rezoned and then of course, you know, we have some families in Nolansville, they want to stay and, and stay with their feeder pattern. So, I would say, you know, looking at the growth through, and trying to be proactive, looking at town planning, looking at current enrollment and then getting community voice. And, and I've been asked this question multiple times and again, I'd like to create a community task force around this very issue, probably pretty early on because we're going to be probably rezoning again soon. Thank you.
Jennifer Apria.
Yeah, so being in District Five, like Margie, I've had similar conversations with families who are very concerned because Nolansville has had a couple of rezoning issues in the past and I know the Triune area is going to have a new school soon. I agree with Margie that I think it's really important that we get the parent voices involved early on in the conversation. I, I'm a big fan of surveys and data, so I would love to be able to put something out early on to see where parents are feeling, what they're, what they're thinking and then using the, the county commission, tapping into them as a resource to collaborate so that we can really proactively plan for the rezoning or not rezoning, but the zoning of new schools as they're formed. Because as we're growing and new schools are popping up all over, it would be so much better for families to not have the upheaval of rezoning if we could just address it really collaboratively and figure out the best way to zone it originally so that we plan for future growth.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yeah, so Williamson County Schools is adding about 1,000 students a year. And so, where we've been building a classroom a week for 25 years on average. And so, the rezoning is, is required because we are building new schools and we have to put students in those schools that, that the county commission gives us money to build. My concerns on rezoning is, one, kind of make sure we're not, we're only doing it to fill a new school, so we're not having to rezone just because we, that we didn't project the, the growth well enough on the existing zones. I also want to try to avoid what we did in Spring Hill this past year, which is where we grabbed all of about 25 students at a middle school and we moved 25 students to, from one school to another. It's better, if we're going to move students, we need to make sure the size is such that it's not, you're not just bringing in a small group into a new, new school. And I think that's all I've got time to talk about.
Jennifer Moss.
Well, rezoning is hard and I live in an extremely large subdivision. I am in, in Bricksworth here and we are now in stage seven and different sections of our one subdivision are close to three different elementary schools and yet we're all being pushed into one elementary school. And so, some of the parents who are down closer to another one are having their children taken to a different one that's further away. So, I think that because we definitely want to encourage a lot of our students to walk or ride bikes to school, I think maybe if we had to rezone again, maybe look at the physical location of the home versus the school and where those children can go most easily for them. And I definitely agree with Mr. Mitchell here about moving 25 students. I heard about that earlier and I thought, last year when it was happening and I, I was not comfortable with that either. We should only rezone to fill a new school or if the growth in one area is so much where the school becomes so over, probably we have to move some students. So, those are definitely some things and we are still growing in this part of town, still growing. We're still building houses and still bringing in more families. So, it's inevitable. Hopefully, we can do it the best that we can without just moving, just taking a little handful and putting them somewhere else. Thank you.
Question seven is a video question.
Hi, my name's Lanier Sparks and I have an 11th grader at Franklin High School. My question is, as people around the nation examine institutions and structures through the lens of social injustice, what will you do as a school board member to ensure inclusion and equality for all of Williamson County students and staff?
Elliot Mitchell is the first to answer.
So, yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Ms. Sparks. I appreciate you asking it. One of the books I've read over the summer that, in fact, my whole family read and we've kind of had a book club about is How to Be an Anti-Racist and, and talk about all of the ways that society does policies and things that we don't even recognize that, that limit access and inclusion of different groups. So, I think that the Cultural Competency Committee that we've been running for the last couple of years is a good framework to continue with that. It, it is a parent and administrator, kind of a roundtable that, that happens once a month for conversations. I would encourage that. I think, I think we need to be alert to our policies and our schools that have been called out for inconsistent ratios of disciplinary actions against, against minorities, for instance. So, but we've got work to do on, on that area within Williamson County Schools.
Jennifer Moss.
Well, first I have to say that it's a, it's a very hard subject for me because I, I cannot fathom treating someone differently because of race or creed or sexual orientation. It makes no sense to me or my family. So, we don't understand it because we can't fathom doing that. With that said, I just think that one great place to start would be in the curriculum and make sure that the curriculum that we're teaching in social studies is all-inclusive, making sure that we are teaching accurately, factually, the contributions of all races and all people of the world, how they have contributed to our American history and teach it all concurrently and factually. And just build that curriculum a little bit better to be more inclusive instead of separating out pieces of it and separating them away. By separating things apart, bringing them up, taking them apart, you're actually creating division. When you teach all of social studies and history together, it is much more inclusive. Thank you.
Dr. Margie Johnson.
A great question. So, the role of school board members, you know, we, we set the vision, mission, strategic plan, we hire, evaluate the superintendent, look at policies and then approve the budget. And so, obviously, I'm living some of this because of my children. We've, we've, you know, experienced some of that and as a school board member, I want to bring our life experiences and that lens to the board and, and look at those policies, you know, look at our vision and mission. How, how might they be revised so that equity and inclusion is part of the conversation? And then also, I had the great opportunity to meet with a family last week where the daughter, she's a student who's actually leading an effort at, you know, one of the high schools and I'm going to be talking about how the students can even come together. So, how can we even empower them to, to help with this issue in our school? But, yeah, I'm all about equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Jennifer Apria.
So, this was an excellent question and like Elliot, I've been doing some learning this summer after all the social issues that have been going on throughout the years. Well, since a long time, I shouldn't just say throughout this year, but I think it is important that we include a little bit stronger language in our strategic plan to make sure that we're addressing this across the district. If you haven't had an opportunity to go on Instagram and see the Dear WCS account, that is, I, I don't know who's running it, it's anonymous, but it is a place where students across the district are submitting stories of things that have actually happened to them that have been racist. And so, if you feel like it's not an issue here, it is and there's, you know, it's out there for everyone to see and we need to address it and we need to be on the same page across the district with how we can handle this and make sure that it's being addressed appropriately. As Elliot said, I think the, the Cultural Competency Committee is important. When it was first formed, I didn't realize that it was for anybody or I would have joined. I thought it was particularly for people of color. I would love to get more involved with that and also maybe call it a racial justice task force so that we can make sure that all community members are feeling like they can be a part of this and, and making it a better, more welcoming community for all.
Jennifer Apria, you will be the first to answer. Question number eight from Anna Lisa Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Anna Lisa Roberts. I work on the Economic Development Team at Williamson Acre. This is my question. What do community partnerships, particularly in workforce and career education, mean to you? Are there specific WCS partnerships that you would like to see expanded?
Well, that's a great question and right up my alley. I do a lot with kids in transition programs and work-based learning programs across the state and I think it is a great opportunity for employers in our community to have people that are of age to start working, hire on students with special needs or disabilities so that they can take part in being a working member of the community and have a more fulfilled life. I think that is a great opportunity and I love going into communities across the state to talk to employers about that because I think it works well for the schools to help educate those, those students on how to become a working part of society and it works well for the employers too because they get a great new team member.
Dr. Margie Johnson.
So, to begin the campaign, I had a community survey and actually, in the top five, there were two things that addressed this. One was about improving non-academic learning, so getting students involved in either civic activity, service projects, or I could see, you know, even career training and then aligning the curriculum to job skills. And I think, you know, we really do need to leverage our community partners to empower our kids to, you know, some when they graduate, they want to go on into the workforce, they may not want to go to college. And with the wealth of resources that we have here, it's also a way, and we've done community partnerships in metro schools, it's also a way to provide wraparound services for students and then just to engage them in learning. You know, when they get to go on the job and, and get to work, there's so many skills that they can learn that, you know, might not be on the academic curriculum, but it's going to help them be lifelong learners.
Jennifer Moss.
I'd like to see some more partnering with employers, having students come in to this, to employ- into this, to employ, places of employment and be apprentices, um, just a few hours a week. Um, maybe they could get school credit for it. Don't know if that's feasible, but have them go into some employers, have the employers, um, have the kids fill out an application, just like a regular job, teach them how to do that, more of a career training, how to get a job, how to keep a job, things like that, I think are very important. And partnering with employers, partnering with, uh, career schools that, once our kids graduate from high school, are they going to go to a college? Are they going to go to a career school? I used to teach at career colleges. I'm a big fan. Um, I also have a four-year degree myself, um, but four-year college isn't for everybody. So I would like to make sure that the kids have that option very clear to them, that the career colleges are here, four-year colleges here, there's places in the workforce if you don't want to go to school. And partner with our business owners and our employers in town to help our students transition into the workforce.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Roberts, for that question. So workforce development is a big issue across the state. Um, you know, not every, where Williamson County Schools is known nationally as a, uh, as a great recruiting, um, area for colleges and universities across the country. Our College Fair has well over 200 schools every year that comes to it. But not all of our students are, are college-bound. So we do have to be concerned about how are we preparing the non-college, uh, graduates for, for, uh, employment? One of the things we've done is we have, uh, collaborated with, with some local businesses to create some technology-based curriculum. Uh, the Megatronics program at Fairview is a perfect example. Students that finish that program are guaranteed a job with the corporation that has helped sponsor that. More and more of that needs, that, that type of program needs to be expanded throughout the district. And frankly, we need to work with the state workforce development to help bring in a, Tennessee College of Applied Technology into Williamson County. So our students that are interested in those programs don't have to go to Dixon or Smyrna or Columbia.
Question number nine, final question. Uh, we'll go to Jennifer Moss first from Tori Kiefer.
New research reveals that the arts may prime our children for a broad range of activities, boosting crucial cognitive and social skills like spoken and written language, focus, self-control, and empathy. As a board member, how would you prioritize fine arts education?
I was a theater major in college, so, um, fine arts education is, is important. Um, it's not funded well. Um, working on getting that funding is, would be the most important thing to keep the fine arts, uh, going. The bands, the music, theater, all of those things of even moving into other forms of, um, athletics, like gymnastics and things like that are very important for the students. It's a, it creates more of a, a balanced learning, uh, experience. So I would say absolutely the, the fine arts are important. It's getting that funding, um, exposing it to the children so they are excited about it, showing them what to do, what it entails, what it's like, and getting them excited about, the more they see, the more they're excited about it. And then when they're excited, it kind of just takes off from there and becomes bigger and bigger. But I think funding is, is our biggest part of it.
Elliot Mitchell.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Tori, for the question. We, we just finished, I'm proud to say that we just finished kind of a 10-plus year effort to build, uh, theaters, add a theater to every middle school in the county. And we just, uh, in, uh, 2019, 2020, just finished that program. So every middle school in Williamson County now has an actual, uh, stage and an auditorium in which for their fine arts, uh, to, to be, uh, uh, performed in. So I think we, we continue to, on that manner, to look at expanding band rooms as well. And we, we continue to sponsor, uh, um, art, the fine arts and the art fairs through, across the county with the mall and places to where we're able to showcase the, um, our, our students' work. So, uh, I think it is, uh, I think Jennifer's right. We need to continue to fund it, uh, so it's not, uh, lost in the, in the shuffle. I also think we've got to figure out how we're going to successfully do a lot of these programs during the pandemic because that's a challenge for, how, how do you, you know, students that share band instruments, for instance?
Jennifer Appria.
So fine arts are near and dear to my heart. Uh, my daughter is very, very involved with musical theater. She just did a remote Zoom version of Glinda from Wicked, um, just this week. So I would continue to prioritize this. I know I spoke with Gary Anderson a little while back on the phone and we had a long conversation about all the good he's done as far as prioritizing fine arts on the board. Um, and so I would love to be able to continue all the work he's already put in. And I think that maybe, you know, we have on the strategic plan, there's mention of STEM, increasing the number of these offerings. Maybe we need to include it in the strategic plan so that it is a firm part of increasing the number of offerings. But I will say, I've always, we have attended musical shows at Page Middle, Page High School, Independence. We kind of travel the county to go watch the shows because my daughter's nine, but she's really excited to get to that level where she can start performing in school. So I would definitely keep that as one of the top priorities of our district.
Dr. Margie Johnson.
Well, one thing that I'm pleased about Williamson County and I, sorry, it's with my mind, whether it's vision or mission, but I know that it talks about, you know, Williamson County will excel at academics, athletics, and arts. So, um, we have to keep the arts, you know, we have students to excel at that and school is about finding students' strengths and allowing them to shine. And so if we took away the arts, I, I just think about, like, my heart hurts thinking about the number of students who would be affected by that. Um, in terms of funding it, you know, maybe that's where I go back to the previous question, maybe not even, um, what was it? Career or workforce partnerships, but maybe there are some community partnerships that we could look at in terms of, uh, funding and supporting the fine arts program. And then also, even when I was a middle school science teacher, many times I would try to infuse art into my classroom because it helps students learn.
It's time for closing statements. Brian Snyder from District Five by video.
If elected to be your representative for the fifth district, these are the things that you can count on for me being focus areas. One, how do we manage strategic growth within our district and within our entire county? I think we can lean on and partner more closely with local municipalities to understand zoning, to understand what's being approved in regards to residential, and maybe more importantly, the significant impact of high-density residential and what that can do to our school system. Secondly, this has been a focal area from the very beginning. How do you get some of those raises into our teachers to pay across the board and recruit and retain the best talent? I think our students deserve it. I think our parents expect it. And I know that our teachers have been working hard for that. And finally, in the land and in the time of COVID-19, as everybody's pivoting and we're looking at online and what that means for businesses and for us as well, I think it's time to figure out, how can Williamson County Schools be the best product offering in regards to having online classes, online certifications? What can that mean for cross-cultural references? Can we talk to schools across the world? Can we talk to businesses across the world? And maybe can we recognize what would that impact be from a carbon footprint if we're reducing students driving, reducing moms and dads driving kids to school? If online is going to be an option, let's have the best online experience as absolutely possible. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Brian Snyder. I look forward to the opportunity to earn your vote on August 6th.
Also from the fifth district, Dr. Margie Johnson.
Well, it has been an absolute pleasure being with everyone tonight and thanks to our hosts for having this forum because it, it certainly has been an interesting campaign season. And we've had to definitely think outside the box. Um, I do want constituents to know that if you have any questions or, you know, feel free to reach out to me at DrMargieJohnson, and it's D R and then Margie, M A R G I E Johnson, at gmail dot com. I'm happy to talk with you, um, either phone, email, you know, whatever modality you prefer. Remember that early voting starts tomorrow, so please go out and vote in your local elections because they are important. And, uh, remember that, uh, Dr. Margie Johnson promises to, uh, use my extensive expertise in education to put students first, foster collaboration, and be a voice for you. And I'd be honored to have your vote, um, on starting tomorrow through August 6th. Thank you.
Jennifer Appria.
That's so crazy that you said voting starting tomorrow. I can't believe it's here. But yes, thank you all for bringing this together. It's been a whirlwind of a, of a season with all that's been going on. But, um, if you ever want to reach out to me, I'm also available on social media. You can go to JenniferAppria on my Facebook page, Twitter, Instagram. Um, you can go to my website, JenniferAppria.com, um, or email me at JenniferAppriaWCS@gmail.com. Um, I would love to be a voice for you all on the school board. I care about kids. I care about teachers. I am one and I have been a kid and I have children. So I have all the experience needed as a classroom teacher and a parent, especially a parent with child with disabilities. Um, I would be a clear communicator. I would work with you all to get your message across to the school board and to the district. And, um, I mean, there's plenty more we didn't cover tonight that I would love to talk to you about, so please feel free to reach out to me at any time. Thank you.
Third district, Elliot Mitchell.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys again putting this together, you ladies as well. Um, so it's been an honor to, to be a member of the school board and to represent my community. Uh, I, I, I enjoy doing it. I find that it's a, it's an important, uh, uh, function and, and I, I would like to have the opportunity to continue in this capacity. Um, as I said earlier, the, the COVID is a, is absolutely a social disruptor and it's forcing us in the school district to make changes and to consider changes to schools that we otherwise would never consider. Uh, but I want everybody to know that our staff has really worked incredible hours and overtime to put together a plan that addresses the needs and the options for all of our parents and children. That said, I recognize it's very confusing and, uh, and the school district and I'm, I'm there committed to, to help improve the communication about our COVID plan. And we will continue to, and I'll continue to advocate to the district, uh, leadership to do that as well. Uh, I think we want to make sure that we're continuing to, um, support the online families that are doing that and not let them, um, get lost in the, in the quietness of the online education. And I also want to make sure that we, uh, look for ways to continue to pay our teachers a salary that's commensurate to the, um, value that they bring to society. And so I'll continue to push for, for, for pay raises for our staff too. Thank you.
Third district's Jennifer Moss.
Oh, well, thank you again for having me. This is absolutely wonderful. Um, I'm also available, um, my email address is JenniferMoss471@gmail.com. Um, I believe I have a lot of educational experience to bring to the board. I would love to hear your voice, um, be your voice on the board. Absolutely, our, I know that our pay for our teachers is not where it should be. That's, uh, something I'm also, I want more supplies given to the teachers. If there's any way to get more supplies to the teachers, um, and unburden the parents and, and get those supplies to the teachers that they need instead of the parents having to buy them with the children's school supplies. Um, and during this time of expanded online education and possibly remote learning, uh, my experience as a professional educator will bring a unique value. Um, I believe I'm a very creative, out-of-the-box thinker and listens to you and will bring your voice to the board. Thank you very much.
Three things to remember. Wear your mask, wash your hands, and vote. Here's Derby.
Well, I just want to thank Tom Lawrence again. And Tom, I know you've been the voice of Williamson County for many years, but I think you've still got a, uh, opportunity and a chance to get on TV. You look, you looked really good on TV tonight. Tom did a fantastic job moderating, so thank you. Uh, I just want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. Uh, thank you all for, uh, your willingness to serve on the school board. School board is very important. Having two kids in the Williamson County Schools, uh, I know how hard you guys work and, uh, appreciate your willingness to run. And thank you for doing this, uh, virtually. Uh, this is, uh, the first time we've done something like this and I think it went pretty well. So I'd like to, uh, just give kudos to the staff one more time who, who did such a fabulous job putting this together and, uh, thanking our sponsors, Williamson, Inc., Kel McDowell, and, uh, Annalisa Roberts, uh, Williams County Association of Realtors, who provided this great backdrop and the spray facilities to let us use tonight. Uh, Jordan Vaughn and Sarah Selman from Williamson Association of Realtors. Uh, Tori Kiefer, the Williamson Herald, uh, was a sponsor. You can pick up a copy today. We have profiles of all the candidates in there with your questions. If you want to do some, uh, more reading on the candidates, we have that in this week's edition of Williamson Herald. And, uh, again, uh, WC TV, couldn't thank you enough, Creed Henderson and the staff who, uh, were able to put this on YouTube and produce this. You can go back and watch it again and thank you all for, uh, for that. Uh, as you all have said, early voting starts tomorrow and runs through Saturday, August 1st. Election Day is August 6th. I wish you all well and thank you again for being here tonight. Good night.